On our level of staff available, you may only have one shift, one crew. Available overnight. So if they're doing a stop on the highway, if they have a DUI stop or something tied up for hours and any other calls come in, there is no one available to respond. And so what's happening is calls are stacking up. That means response times are going down. The other thing that you see happening, um, not, not just on the response times and call stacking, but the ability of the department to do any sort of proactive policing. On the enforcement side to like actively choose an initiative like drug enforcement or something to go after. It's very hard for them to do that when essentially they're just catching up with call volumes or stacked calls constantly. They, they, they don't have a moment to actually. Schedule a productive policing sort of exercise to organize those activities and, and, and try to do that of their own accord. They basically just respond to the fires metaphorically and, and. Physically, if that makes sense. So what you have seen in our budget and people can go back and see this in the line items is it has been blowing up our overtime line item. You have officers that are constantly either in field training or at the academy because you have a lot of newer officers and you're rotating them so much. When they're in field training or at the academy, that means they're not on the street. So someone is covering for them and a lot of times. That's going to be your higher tenure officers, or it could even be your higher ranked officers, your sergeants, lieutenants, or even the, the chief are having to do elements. That patrol would normally be doing, but for the lack of people, you have those folks doing those things. And as a result, your, your per hour cost is higher because it's in the form of overtime. Cause they've already done their normal shifts. So that's an element that's been happening. We peaked in overtime a few years ago. And I challenged the department to try to get that down as much as possible. And I think they've been doing a great job with, with what they could to do that. But the problem is you still have the wear and tear and the morale issues that are happening with the rest of the staff, just trying to get those basic coverages. And so what happened this year, as the chief explained to you all, is something that's never happened in the department in the past. To his knowledge where the officers had to sit down and talk with them just to lay out their concerns. And ultimately. I believe that everybody wants to see the department sustain long-term. And so they were just making it very clear about the challenges they're seeing and the obstacles that are keeping the department from being sustainable in the long term. So. Um, that, that led us during the work sessions to make that presentation to you all to explain those concerns, to bring up the ask to try to get additional officers to help out with those shifts. Coverages and deal with these other problems that we're seeing. So. That ultimately led into the budget that you published for tonight and the ask was for, for police officers. We have looked at opportunities to try to fund those in other ways. There are some grants and things that we looked at what I. I, I think the decision that we came to is funding positions with grants is very risky. Um, you have seen that in other cities, especially during the COVID period where they funded a bunch of op- ongoing operational costs as opposed to one-time cost. Using grants. The problem is grants eventually run out. And so if you don't have the funding to pay for those positions at that time, you end up seeing cuts. And that's, that's what happened coming out of a lot of the COVID money era. Any of the cities that paid for annual operating costs like that, like staffing with grant money. Ran into those issues and had to make major cuts. Uh, we don't think that's sustainable to fund that way. Ultimately. Um, the way that you fund your police and fire is through the general fund. That's why we made the ask this year. So. The discussion goes back a long time. This is the first year we really pulled the trigger. Metaphorically and pun intended to make the ask and explain what was going on. And a lot of that had to do with our frontline staff. Approaching leadership and explaining their concerns. And again, not, not just concerns for, you know, for their own benefit. It's concerns about the long-term viability and sustainability. For the city and for the, for the department. All right. So the la- I think it's the last slide and then I'll turn it over to council to have your presentation, but the 2026 has a variety. Of capital projects and initiatives that are tied to it. So again, the mill levy changes are tied to the positions. Um, but your budget is, uh, more than that. It's about the projects that you're choosing as well. So I wanted to highlight a few things that are going to be relevant for the people in the room, for the people at home. One of the, the biggest area of concern that you've been hearing from citizens, you've all had personal conversations. I've had personal conversations, you haven't seen on social media is about the. State of the electric grid. And one of the things about Augusta, it is an older community. A lot of your infrastructure is older. And a lot of it happened to be put in around the same time period. And so that means a lot of it is aging out and, and reaching the end of its useful life around the same time. And so the, the electric grid is part of that. There's, there's not going to be a silver bullet for fixing outages because outages are caused by a variety of things. But what we need to do is to start looking at all of the opportunities we have with our system. To make improvements, to start impacting people's quality of life to the, to the biggest extent that we can with the resources that we have available. And so, um, I believe it was about three years ago, we started applying for grants to do a project. And it's actually the first bullet point on this slide is the electric low voltage system conversion. Our, we, we essentially operate two grids in the city and, and they are different voltages. Okay. And I don't want to dive deep into the technical terms because it's kind of irrelevant, but the point is that the lower voltage system. Has a lot of concerns from a safety perspective, but just from an operational perspective. And it covers the area between the old electric plant, which is down by the overpass, stretches across the highway through all of those neighborhoods, going all the way up. To the Armory substation by the point and by the Armory. And then I think even stretches over to Belmont. So there, there's a good eight or nine hundred homes, I believe that are on that system. That system is one of the more unreliable portions of our grid. And as for a variety of reasons. The substation that it's on is essentially obsolete. You're getting to the point that you can't, um, do a lot to maintain and upkeep that substation. There is also a lot of alleyways and easements and things that are overgrown with trees and tree limbs. Getting into your, uh, your lines is one of the biggest causes. So you can have days where the wind is blowing a little bit and it moves a tree limb, causes an outage. Or just the fact that your tree limbs are close to lines helps wildlife get into line squirrels, snakes, birds. Those are common reasons for outages as well. And so the project that we came up with allows us to eliminate that old substation. It allows us to, uh, clear all of those alleyways to actually have all of those trees. Uh, cut back all as one single project and replace broken poles, transformers, anything like that along the way that we need to replace. We applied for a grant twice because it was about an eight million dollar project. And when we started applying, the electric fund was not in a position to be able to fund that. We got rejected for the grant both times. So we tried to get help so that our, um, electric users wouldn't have to pay that cost. We were not successful. Uh, so this year when we started talking to council about it, we told you, we think it's just the time to pull the trigger on that as well. And to actually do what we need to do with, uh, with a bond issue to fund that electric low voltage conversion project. So, um, our staff has actually been working on this portion of the system for years, but the problem is they're working with the cash. And the staff that they have on hand going a couple hundred thousand dollars at a time. Well, at that rate, it's going to take 25 years to get through that system. That is far too long. Um, people won't stand for it and they're already having too many issues. So. Um, the 2026 budget includes funding in the electric utility to do that seven or eight million dollar electric conversion project. Which should start tackling some of the major reliability issues in our system. Again, not. Every reliability issue and not every single place in town, but by our council, somewhere between like seven, eight, nine hundred homes that are impacted by that system. So we're hoping that that makes a big difference. The second item is the public works complex, complex construction. This. Actually started about 15 years ago as well, even before I arrived at the city. Uh, councils and staff were talking about the public works construction. Um, one of the things I can tell you is that it's becoming more dire. E- each and every year, and you guys had an ADA inspection transition plan that was done this year that essentially identified. Um, most of our city facilities not in compliance and major investments required in order to update them, just to bring them into basic compliance with ADA. You also had an inspection from the Kansas Department of Labor this year for two, and two of our facilities, the street shop and the, the park shop. Which are the main facilities being addressed in this project were essentially identified by the Department of Labor as should not be inhabited by people. And so we're at a point now where we don't have much of a choice other than to bring those facilities up to what they, they need to be brought up to in order to continue occupying them. So. This budget includes funding for the public works construction as well. But if you go back through those staff reports, we tried to give you a financial plan that mitigated any mill levy impact of doing that project. So we were able to. Lower cost in some places to offset the debt increase that was associated with it. So. Um, some folks may think that that project is driving the mill levy change. It's not. It's the staffing related to the, uh, the public safety department. The automated weather observation system. There's an item on your agenda tonight. This is the weather system for the airport. Uh, important for pilots when they're making their plans, when they're landing so they can get updates on weather conditions to land out there safely. Uh, we are wrapping up the land acquisition and, uh, will likely be moving into the grant process to get the AWAS constructed next year if possible. There's the Red Bud, uh, phase two bridge project and. Anybody following that, there's two phases to that project. The first one is what's under construction right now. That's the bridge on highway four hundred. The second phase. Is the bridge on the river. In each case, the city received grants to do those projects. Phase one, you received a transportation alternative grant. Um, there was an eighty twenty, meaning 20% local match, 80% funded by the federal government. And then our 20% local match on that project, we funded with other money that we received from the federal government for transportation projects. And, uh, through a contribution from the city of Andover of $250,000. So that's how we covered the 20% portion for the phase one project. The phase two, uh, we just did the request for qualifications to get an engineer onboard. We received a federal grant. Uh, it was actually a combination. It's a state federal grant combination this past year. That's a hundred percent funded, meaning there is no local match for that phase two project. So you don't have mill levy. Property taxes that are associated with that project. And, um, if you go back to the origins of that, that whole discussion. The council and staff never took a position that, that you would be taking that project on if that was all on your local taxpayers. You told us to do everything possible to secure funding. We just happened to secure essentially a hundred percent of that funding through grants to make those possible. And so that's, that's why those projects are happening is because we were successful in those grant applications. The next project is Santa Fe Lake Oji weir. The, the weir is the system on the spillway that essentially allows water to go over the top of it. We redid the weir at the city lake back in 2012. That, that's the labyrinth structure that you see out there right now. Uh, Santa Fe Lake weir is crumbling and has been for a very long time. You can walk up and essentially crumble parts of that concrete with your hands. So, uh, we are trying to wrap up the studies on that project, ultimately to turn that into a construction project to get that weir rebuilt. And, uh, we're planning on going after grant funding for that as well, to try to help with those costs. Water tower rehabilitations. Um, we're essentially down to the last tower, which is Arnold, which we haven't touched. Uh, in the 20-year span, there's normally about a 20-year lifetime on, uh, on some of those towers. We redid golf, we redid state already. Um, but Arnold Tower is in need of rehab and during our most recent inspection, we also identified some items on the golf tower. That need attention as well. There, there are some parts where coatings are peeling or they have some rust and, and repairs that need to be made there. Uh, so there's, there's water funding. We're going to have to secure this year to try to finish those towers. And then finally on your street packages, uh, you do have another pavement preservation package that we're going to be doing in 2026. And then 2027 is when the brand new sales tax that the community voted on actually takes effect. And so. What the community voted on in that sales tax included money for streets, but the way it was worded actually says you can use it for sidewalks as well. Historically. Um, your ballot measure did not say anything about sidewalks. So none of that money went to pedestrian infrastructure in that way. Unless, uh, blocks, residential blocks were being rehabbed and they had sidewalks adjacent. Then you actually did them at that time as part of that construction project. Outside of that, you had no money dedicated to sidewalks. But we don't have a sidewalk project lined up in 2026 because the revenue source to pay for that isn't technically available. Until I think, um, late September, October in 2026 is when you actually start collecting the new sales tax that people were voted on. So. Um, we will, we will probably have a sidewalk package. I, I think our first one going into the 2027 budget, which we haven't started yet, but for anyone asking why we haven't. That's why is because our revenue source doesn't exist until the end of next year. All right. So I, I've spoken enough. That is a, a basic overview. Again, you've obviously gone much more in depth in the sessions leading up to this hearing. Uh, but I at least wanted to try to give folks a bit of perspective on what's in the 2026 budget document. Now I'll turn it over to council for you to open your public hearings. And I'll, I'll be here for any questions that you may have.
Okay. We're discussing the revenue neutral rate only at this point. Will not be talking about the budget. That's the way we have to do things legally. So I'm opening the public hearing for the revenue neutral rate. If you want to speak about that, we'll give you five minutes. Here at the podium, we'll need you to state your name and your address. And then make a brief statement, one way or the other, and, uh, then allow somebody else to speak. So with that, is there somebody here that wants to speak about the revenue neutral rate? Mr. Smith? Bring the mic to you. Thank you.
Shelby Smith, seven twenty State Street. And I'm not really prepared for this. I got home about five forty-five and printed off some stuff, but what I take umbrage with, with you guys in general. Is the mill levy talk. It's confusing to everyone. Josh said earlier, the last couple of years, we've lowered the tax rate, which is the mill levy rate. And if you just take for instance, from your website, 2022 or 2023 to 2024, your budget went up eight point five percent. Your mill levy rate went down one point six two five percent. So your mill levy rate went down while raising taxes, only the taxes on us. That's all I'm looking at. Four hundred thousand dollars. Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, taxes on the citizens. We're about thirty-seven hundred households here. Went up another two hundred thousand dollars, five point seven percent. Mill, mill levy rate went down point two nine percent. So you guys, you don't set the mill levy. You set your budget and what you tax us at. And on your twenty-four. Budget said, uh, the amount of property taxes to be levied for 2024 totals four point six million dollars and change. Then it goes on to say what the mill levy will most likely be. And when your budget ended up at the end of the year, you spent four point six million dollars. The mill levy fluctuates based on our valuations, what is collected, who's delinquent. It doesn't matter. You guys set the budget of what you spend. Mill levy is just our valuations based on what you tax. That's all it is. It's a ratio. Uh, the values, Josh showed it earlier. We went from, uh, they've increased, I wrote it on here somewhere. Thirty-four percent in the last five years. I just looked at the last five years, twenty-two to twenty-six. Your, your taxes levied have gone in 2022, went from three point seven million dollars. This year you're proposing five point three million dollars in taxes. That's a 40% actual dollar tax upon the citizens. The mill levy rate from that time, I had it figured for last year, up until last year, the mill levy rate went up point five percent. Our mill levy rate changed a half a percent. Our taxes went up 40%. Real dollars taxed on us. Now with this year's middle levy rate, our, the middle levy will have changed five percent. Our taxes have gone up 40%, three point seven million to five point three million. That's my main, my, my main conceit is like even earlier was a little deceptive. Saying we've lowered your tax rate the last couple of years. Okay, come see, come saw, but you've raised our taxes every single year without fail. There's not been a. You, when we come to you guys with complaining about taxes and then you throw mill levy at us. It offends us and it makes us feel like we don't understand. Our budgets are tighter. And 2022 is a thousand thirteen dollars per household. That we paid in taxes to the city. You're proposing this year it's fourteen hundred and twenty-five dollars per household. Forty percent increase. So at least acknowledge to us, hey, we're raising your taxes, which Josh did earlier. Eight point seven percent for next year. You're raising the taxes you're levying on us from four point eight million dollars, almost four point nine to five point three. I just would like that to be stated clearly to everyone. If you could put it on the website, it would be helpful. This wasn't really in the budget. This was just in your. Your budget meeting, hearing, updates of every year that I just Googled off your website, which is, wasn't hard to find, but it's not clear and plain and it's confusing for everyone. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I got a question, Shelby, real quick. This is something going through the budget, because I feel like we're in a pickle, the council, because we got two things to vote on tonight. Support our police officers and raise taxes, or don't support the police officers and keep taxes low. That is really what's up for vote, but. What would, I don't like it. I mean, everybody on this council knows the whole budget session, I kept saying, we have to cut stuff. What are we going to cut? What are we not going to take? What would be your recommendation? Cause and I don't, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Right.
But not one soul from this community showed up for a budget session. They were all open. Not one person called me. And said, Jeff, you, you gotta do this or that.
Right.
So I was hoping for people to come up, if they could just throw their two cents in and say, this is what I recommend. And, and it's okay if you can't, because I know I'm putting you on the spot.
We do elect district two members that ran on a platform of, hey, we're going to cut your taxes. Thank you very much. Please go do that job for me. I'm a trustee at the community college at Butler. That's, I worked my butt off over there. We cut taxes three times out of the last six years. We actually lowered mill levy. We're the lowest. Milled college in the state. They raised your taxes last year. They're raising them again this year.
Yeah, no, I, I hear what you're saying.
I understand, but like last year we're buying new vehicles, we're leasing them. It's more expensive, but it makes our employees feel good. Okay. I drive a beater. I don't feel good about it. I don't think my employees, you guys should necessarily feel great about your vehicles you drive. So I was against that. We need to, as a city, find some way to generate revenue as a city on a product or service you can offer. And make money on. It just can't come all out of our pockets. I know it's not all out of our pockets, but a 40% increase in five years is quite a lot. Yeah. It's not nothing. So we're irritated, but it's not really our job to figure out how to generate money at the, that's why we elect you guys. I know it's unfair and it's not appreciated and I, I get that all the time.
Yeah. Well, and some of the defenses, nobody ran for election this year, but one.
I know, I was asked to run.
I, I asked, I got lucky and somebody's running my ward, so I got four more months and I'm off. But ward one, two or three, not one soul stepped up to run.
I was, I was pressured to run, but I've already spending 10 hours a month at the college and it's.
No, I understand, I understand.
But no, I understand. It's a thankless job and.
No, it's not that. I just, I wish there, I, I, I would really like to know some options that the public would recommend, because then it's easier, because. When you don't do, you know, we had a member this year, you know, didn't like the way the sidewalks were getting cleaned up. I agree with it. Sidewalks in town stink. Well, that costs money.
Right.
So do we buy, you know, a premier three hundred and fifty thousand dollar street sweeper that also cleans the sidewalks or hire more people to shovel the sidewalks or does the public get out?
You did upgrade.
You did. That's because somebody came in here and said, yeah, I agree.
But you have a used one that works.
Yeah, I agree. Well, no, it doesn't work. Well, no, trust me. We wanted it to work. We, we told them.
But my, my other idea that I've had, it's oversimplification. I'm not in your shoes, but have our city employees do tree trimming and. Do lots, do what's needed to be done in the city, which I know you guys are. That's just. But I'm not informed as well as you guys are.
No, I understand that. That's like I said, it'd be nice to have.
But when our taxes go up 40%, you guys tell us we've lowered the mill levy. So what? I don't care about the mill levy rate.
Completely agree. I think that's why Josh explained that way, because I, I used to be confused on that same point. One thing the council has helped me is. Lowering the mills doesn't mean your taxes go down.
No, you could lower the mill and raise your taxes. You could do that easily this year, because the county sets our, they set our values, which has nothing to do, like in city of Augusta right now, we have sixty-eight houses on the market. And the market's soft.
Yeah.
We went super high in our valuations and people are like, we're out. Taxes are high, going up again. Values are high. Let's bail and no one's buying right now.
Yeah.
I mean, we've, we've had zero growth in the town. We lost, we're one of the few cities that's lost over a hundred. People. I know part of that's working on the refinery. We haven't grown. We have no reason to, no one wants to come to Augusta. Why? The taxes are high. I've been here since eighty-eight. It's a great town, but why would you choose us over somewhere with a lower tax burden out of Butler County especially?
I mean, we, we have, we have to grow. I think that's what it is. You know, we had to put a neighborhood in in 20 years until this council, the people have been on here four years. Not a neighborhood, it's been built in the city in 20 years.
Right.
And that's where we're just taxing the same people over and over more and more.
That's what you're doing. You're raising our burden.
And we need more community, we need more neighborhoods, we need more businesses.
Coming here because they don't want to join.
Yeah.
So.
So I think you do see a new neighborhood coming in and hopefully we get more.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for everybody's information, we're all citizens here of Augusta. We all have Augusta addresses. Some of us have multiple buildings and so we're all paying taxes. None of us up here want to raise taxes, but we have services that the city demands. You've had your time, shall we? We have services that you as citizens want to see and we wrestle for months on how to, how to meet those services. And it takes money. He just talked about, let's have everybody trim trees. Well. We only have a few people that are qualified to trim trees safely around electrical lines. And. They've got multiple times they get called away from that to restore your power because. Your meter burn up or somebody cut a tree down and pulled the, your meter off your house. Things like that, or the squirrels. The squirrels are notorious for tripping the fuses on the transformers. And, uh, we are doing everything we can to do that. Now I'm not making a plea one way or the other. I'm just stating facts that we're all taxpayers up here. So please remember that. We, we feel your pain. My taxes almost doubled this year on my property. So, uh, it's. And some of it was from the school, you know, some of it was from Butler County College. Some of it's from other places. It's not all from the city. So Josh.
This, just a bit of information, because I actually received a call today on the, uh, the leasing program for vehicles as well. And, and Shelby just brought it up. So just to share some information, what. For the public, what we did with that, that's actually these line items here. And you can see the past couple of years. Historically, what we were doing is we had cash saved up and we were buying vehicles with the cash. What we did in the leasing model is we essentially took that amount that we were paying in cash to buy vehicles. And put them into a fund that we're using to pay leases. So we didn't dramatically increase anything for the leasing. We just got a lot of other vehicles that have been able to swap out and you're paying that instead of cash for a few vehicles, you're paying that on annual lease payment. So we didn't drive up the mill levy related to that, but I got a call on that today. And so I wanted to walk through it because, uh, people in the public. Hadn't heard that information. The gentleman on the phone today appreciated it. So, uh, again, that is a model. That originated out of the COVID pandemic because we were not even able to get access to vehicles. And so a lot of cities started switching that model to even get access. But in terms of the finances associated with it, we essentially just took the cash that was going to those, put it in a fund, and we're using that same amount annually to pay for the vehicles. And then as we get to the point of trading those vehicles in, there is an equity value that we'll get back on those. And that's what goes back into the fund to sustain it. Where we're at right now, uh, we've replaced most of the old vehicles in the fleet, but we haven't gotten to the point yet where we're trading in any of the new vehicles. That'll start happening in the next two years. And so that's when we'll really be able to evaluate the financial viability, depending on how good those equity numbers are. So just because I had someone call me today, I wanted to make sure to share that information.
Just a point of order. Is it public speaking time or is it public speaking?
Why is he living in a life that you guys go on?
It's public speaking time for the revenue neutral rate. It's public speaking time for the revenue neutral rate. So is there someone else that has some comments about the revenue neutral rate? And Mr. Smith's right. The revenue neutral rate, the mill levy thing is confusing. You know, whether we lower it or raise it, it's usually the taxes are going up. Okay, I'm gonna close the meeting on the revenue neutral rate. So we have a resolution number twenty-two-five-dash-eighteen to exceed the revenue neutral rate. The council needs to have a motion on and then a vote.
Mayor, make a motion to, to approve resolution number twenty-two-five-dash-eighteen to exceed the revenue neutral rate.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Erica, will you call the roll?
For clarification, who was the second?
Pardon?
Okay, Martin?
No.
Burke?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Scott?
No.
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mar?
No.
Motion carries.
Motion carry. Okay. Now we will open the public hearing on the twenty-twenty-five budget. Same rules, five minutes. State your name and address.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm actually different. I actually want to give you guys a little bit of more money. You need a little bit more money to do your job.
Name and address.
Surname and address. Oh, yeah, it's Troy Kramer, eleven-oh-five Ada. You know where I live.
Well, not everybody does, so.
Almost everybody does now. Either way, I actually want to give you some more money. I think you need a little bit more money to do your job. The problem is the job is not being done. I think any money we give you, more money, it's just a waste of time. It's a waste of money. You're failing on basic city services. Electric, we don't even need to talk about that, do we? Wastewater, yeah, you got an award, but you know, the ditches behind Seventh Avenue and the walk path, they're full. It's a Zika City back there. No one's cleaning that out. Right? So wastewater, you fail. Trash, you fail, because I see a trash all over the streets. And downtown trash never gets picked up on a timely basis. There's garbage in the cans right on, on State Street that you're supposed to be so proud of. Um, police, crime's going up. It's not going down, right? I'd be happy to give you more money if it made a difference, but it doesn't make a difference. You're, you're cutting your budget short on animal control. You're shutting your budget down on code enforcement. You are all in violation of your code. There were rules and regulations put in place by predecessors of yours that you've decided to ignore. These are items that make our neighborhoods healthy, clean, and safe. But you're going to ignore those to make sure that y'all get new boots every year and you have new cars. And now you have a bridge to nowhere. And I'm glad that you're taking care of your employees. Don't take me wrong, but it shouldn't come at the detriment of your citizens. Okay? If you had a decent manager, he would have seen that that building was going to fall apart years ago and taken care of it years ago. Same with the electrical system. You're only taking care of the electrical system now, because you're about ready to get erupted by your, every citizen in town, their power goes up. Yeah, you better do something about it. So change your management. Get some better management, because it's never going to change until you do. I think you've had enough years of this guy to figure that out. No one's managing the little things. Who's cleaning the toilet at the park downtown? It's a pit. I won't even go in there anymore. Who's gonna fix the traffic, the walk signal at Seventh and State that's been broken for months? And now school's in session, so, you know, children have to walk across Seventh at State with no light. Don't you all care? I think he's saving money on a service call, because it's the only thing broken in town, so he wants to save money and actually hurt people's lives. I ain't got much else to say. Um, as soon as our, um, tax rebate program ends, which is a ten-year program, we're gonna move out of this town. Because it's not worthwhile. And don't shake your head at me.
No, I will, I will shake my head, because you know, the fact is.
When you ride your bike on State, on the sidewalks, on State, you're breaking ordinance. You understand that?
Oh, I'm firmly, I'm firmly aware of what the ordinance is.
You know, the only, the only concrete work I've seen in my ward was in front of my councilperson's house. The only infrastructure work I've seen in my ward was across the street from my civil councilperson's house. It's obvious, you know, who gets taken care of in this town and who doesn't. On four blocks away from this councilperson's house, there's been a car in the yard for four years solid that has never moved. Two blocks down from this councilperson's house, there's a trailer, I'm talking, a truck trailer, you know, a rent-a-trailer in a driveway that is crossing the sidewalk on Osage, and it's been there for months and people are living in there. So you think you're doing code enforcement? You got a dozen kittens at Twelfth and Dearborn wandering the streets that nobody wants. Now, I've called animal control and no one's picking them up. So are you really doing us right? Are you doing right by us? Do you really think you're doing right by us? You all have a good night.
Anybody else?
My name is Missy. Missy Meckel. I live at ninety-seven eighteen Southwest US Highway fifty-four. And I am the wife of Sergeant and SRO Officer Meckel. And I'm here today to speak from a personal standpoint. You know, we can talk about how the crime has increased. These guys are so overworked. I don't think you understand what they're going through, what our families are going through. And the community out there that hasn't had to call for a response and notice the lag time. God forbid that's your mom or your child that's put tenth in the queue, because there's five other calls ahead of you. It is a huge problem, a huge problem that a lot of you probably aren't even aware about. And over the years, I just see how the increasing demands is not only taking toll on my husband and my family, but as an apartment, we're very, very close. So we talk, we see, we feel the pain, that the constant overtime and just the stress. So we're asking very few officers, we don't have very few officers to be on the street. Those that are there, you heard of the overtime. I mean, they're tired, they're stressed, they're not at their best game. God forbid we have something that is a major crisis in the city, because what are you gonna do? What are we gonna do if, you know, school shooting, God forbid, something like that were to happen? And we have two officers to pull from, two officers that are running on two hours sleep. Like, it is, it's not, it's, it's an issue that is, is seriously impacting the lives of our officers and the families. Um, in addition, about a year ago, I recruited my own nephew to the department. He was here. Super gung-ho to be a member of the Augusta Department of Safety. He lasted a year. Because the hours and about every other, every other agency in the city pays more. And if, and he's starting his family, and as a new family, if you can go somewhere, make five, six, seven, eight dollars more an hour, you're gonna go, no matter how much you love Augusta. He, he bought a house here, he lives here. He now commutes to Park City, because they pay more, but he had every intention on staying here. And it, it's just something that the community, again, I, I don't think you guys understand, like, what truly is happening. Because a lot of you probably haven't had to call nine-one-one in an emergency. But if you do, and your grandpa or your mom is dying and we don't have the resource to get to it, that's a tragedy. So you can say that the crime is increasing, and of course it's increasing. They're not out there catching speeders or drug dealers. They're running the, the calls of the families that need us first and foremost. And it, it's just, it really is just disheartening. And I, I can't say that I know a lot about budgets or how budget works, but I know how this is impacting the family of all of us. And we, we somehow have got to fund them. And I know nobody wants to increase taxes. I sure don't want to increase taxes. But I also don't want to be in a situation where I need immediate response from my daughter or somebody. And they can't respond, because, you know, we saw, we saw that all the, the lists of, of facts that Josh presented of what the department is facing. So I am coming to you as a personal level, and this is how this is truly, truly impacting the lives of the officers. And Matt's been with the department for twenty-five years, and I can, I can just see it on his face, the toll that this is taking on him. And it was mentioned, he's not the only one. There are a significant portion of officers that have been here a very long time. And if every new officer we hire trains in Augusta and then all of a sudden goes somewhere else, there is going to be no one with experience to take over, and you're going to be in a bigger, bigger situation than you're in now. So something, you know, I, I, I don't know. I, I also have twenty-five years of experience in education. I've seen the Wichita education system. We know how that is. We've seen how Andover is taking all of those families that don't want to send their kids to Wichita. We need to explore other avenues to get families to move here for the education, to build homes, they will build the community. That is what we need to be considering. We need to think outside of the box, but most of all, we need to fund our officers. Because we're all at stake. We are all at jeopardy. And I, I just think that it's very important that we, that we understand that. We may need more officers. We need competitive wages with the surrounding departments. And I don't know. I, I, it, it just comes from my heart, because I see all of these faces over here. I know how overworked they are. I know how passionate they are about their jobs, but you can only do so much. So that's why I am coming here, trying to make everybody aware of what it's like on the other side. And I don't know, I, I, I just really hope that we approve this, not only for the safety of the city, but for the morale of the current employees that are there. So I appreciate you and thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is David Smith, and I live at six-oh-four Belmont Avenue. Right outside the edge of the power grid, but I'm gonna say one thing. After living in the Flint Hills for eleven years, this is the most reliable power grid I've seen in a long time. Because we were used to going weeks without power, so. What I'd like to say is, gentlemen, we moved here because of the schools. We are now grandparents taking care of a grandson, like so many of the elderly folks now that are forced to do it. Because today's youth just weren't raised to, to take care of the responsibilities. And it's tough. I'm retired. I get social security. I get my retirement pension. But it doesn't always cover the bills. It doesn't always cover some of the doctor bills, medicine, and some of the other things we have to do to support him. We buy all our clothes from Goodwill for him or garage sales. I buy most of my clothes at Goodwill for garage sales. My taxes have gone up to the point. And when you increase the value of a home, it also increases your home insurance. Since we, I will be here three years in October, my house payment has gone up four-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars because of taxes and insurance alone. And I just can't do it anymore. And we called a realtor to have an evaluation on our home. We're not sure now it'll bring what we paid for it three years ago. Because of the flat market and everything else that's going on, the interest rates. So guys, stop and think of us poor people out here. We're working hard to do the best we can for our family and try to give our kids a future. And right now, we're slowly backsliding, unfortunately. So I encourage you to think if there's any other possible ways without tax increases and the corresponding. I'm driving cars. One car just rolled over two-hundred thousand. The other one's got a hundred-and-eighty thousand on it. It's a ninety-five, and my taxes now on that are almost a hundred dollars a year. For a, for a almost thirty, thirty-year-old car. And I don't know what else to do. I'm at wits' end. You know, I've worked hard all my life to try to have something, to give my family something, but I feel like we're going nowhere. We're just rolling back, so. Thank you for your time and considerations.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Anyone else? Okay, I will close the public hearing. So, counsel, it's time to look at the budget.
Well, before we vote or anything, I mean, I'm still, don't like our two options and you know, I mean, we, we, we only have two options in front of us, and I don't think they're too good options either way. You've heard everyone and, and saying this to the whole budget session, you know? Raising, you know, I don't know if we're ever gonna get to revenue neutral.
No.
I know that was the goal, but to raise mills at all, everybody knows I'm not about it. But to turn around and tell our police officers, we're not gonna support them, that's, that's the only options that are on the board tonight, and I don't think either one of them. I don't.
I'm all for better options. I want, everybody, I think, wants to support the police. We all want to do that. Nobody wants their taxes to go up. Nobody does. And so can we do better? Can we do better options?
Like Jeff said, we're in a pickle, for lack of better words. So, you know, I own a house, I own a building, and I'm not living in a vacuum. You know, because if we vote to go ahead and raise the taxes, I get hit just like you guys do. And running a business, that's, it's not a good thing. But I also know, you look at one side. If we don't have officers and somebody falls down, breaks their hip, has a heart attack, and they can't get there for thirty minutes, then it's gonna be, well, you guys should have added more officers. On the flip side of that, you add the four officers, and then you get nailed for spending more money. So we're kind of at a, at a no win. And I do think public safety is paramount. Uh, I know Mr. Kramer said that things are going up and, uh, all the bad things about the city. I've lived here almost all my life, other than the six years I was deployed. And raised two kids here. Couldn't think of a better place. But we've got some hard decisions and, um, I've talked to the chief, I've talked to officers. And I, and I think everybody in this room is definitely pro-officer. But the fact of the matter is, that's where your taxes go, is to salaries. And if somebody could give me a silver bullet to fix the problem that has been festering for the last ten to fifteen years, I would love to. I just don't have that silver bullet.
I don't, where I live, I see a lot of police activity. I, I know, I know what you guys are going through at night, so there's no question to me, I don't like raising it, but there's no question to me that we have to, to do that, so. That's just my opinion.
When does this have to be turned in, Josh? Like, is there, is there a go back to the drawing board and come up with an option three? Like is there, is there a go back to the drawing board and come up with an option three?
Eric is checking the deadline.
There's not enough time to increase, but there's, there's just enough time.
Yeah, I don't think anybody here wants this increase. No, I, oh no, for sure, for sure. That's, I mean, I think that's make sure that's clear. When they put that number in, that was the high. You know, several of us, you know, want the number down. So don't be thinking, everybody, and I don't think anybody in the council wants that to be clear. But you have to go to a number because you can't go up, but you can come down. So be clear, we can come down.
And I think Josh, that was the part of the revenue neutral kind of information that you presented at the beginning that I would ask that you just reaffirm for the public's understanding, which when you post a proposed or potential budget that is going to potentially exceed revenue neutral, that is your, that is your statutory requirement to post that. Because you don't have an option to adjust anything up after that. You can always adjust down, which is the intent.
In order for you to even consider, to even have the discussion of the budget that's in front of you tonight, you have to publicize the notice showing that the revenue neutral was going to increase, even to have the conversation. Because to your point, you can lower, but you can't increase beyond that. So that's the position you're in. Now you have the ability to go lower on the mill levy, on the amount of tax dollars, but you can't go any higher than what was published. So this is the max that's possible.
And the deadline for submitting is 5:00 PM on October 1st. So it has to be submitted to the county, which means I would need some time to get that ready too. So, but 5:00 PM on October 1st is the deadline.
And I believe that, I'm not a mind reader clearly, but I believe the state's intent with the revenue neutral conversation was to create an environment like we have tonight. Because it is very hypothetically, it's very difficult to operate on your current year's needs on last year's budget, based on simple inflationary pressures in the marketplace, wages, fuel, energies, et cetera. It creates an opportunity for us to have these conversations. And so A, I'd just like to say thank you to everybody that came tonight because to Jeff's comment earlier. The budget sessions were a ghost town. And so I've heard some kind of offhanded comments through the evening where it's, it's your job, it's your job. Well, the truth of the matter is, this group was elected by the public to, to make these hard decisions. But not in a void of public input. And so the fact that you're here tonight, thank you. The fact that our safety department officers are here tonight, thank you. We see you, we understand and I, I appreciate the fact that you took time to have a sit down conversation with chief and the other leadership. So that your concerns could be heard as opposed to simply making a choice to go somewhere else. And so we're making progress. It might not feel like it in these moments, but that's progress, right? We're measuring conversations now towards a unified or better solution because we have more voices weighing in and that's progress. Perfect decisions won't ever happen. There will be somebody that walks out of tonight saying, it should have been this or it should have been that. And the truth of the matter is, you may be right. But there's no crystal ball that's gonna forecast the absolute perfect decision for any of us. And so some might vote yes, some might vote no, depending on if it's revenue neutral or the budget. The truth of the matter is, our community has needs. And our community has citizens that are struggling. And we have to balance that and that has to be factored in. I was absent at the plus minus conversation during the budget planning session for a family vacation. So I did not get the benefit of the conversation in the room that day. I lean more towards what Councilman Brown is suggesting where we, we have to go back and make something different in this budget. I don't know what that is without putting these minds together and your minds and input in our conversations. But I do know that as it sits tonight, I could not vote yes for the proposed budget as it stands.
I guess I did would be in my mind, do we try to add one officer every year? So the impact of the city's not so big. Do we? I mean, to find out this last budget meeting, we need four, when it felt like everything was wrapping up. And then you thought we were gonna be at 56 mills, you know, not be raising the mill, not the revenue neutral, the mills. And then all of a sudden you're going up four mills and trying to figure that out is, it was tough. And Josh knows I voiced that. I was caught off guard. Should have been something we were working in all year long. I don't know. Yeah, I don't know what it is. I definitely don't want the officers leaving here thinking we're not gonna support them. Correct. I don't know how we go at four mills. Anyone else have something to kick in?
Yeah, I want to say I, all of these officers, I know each one of them individually. And I've worked with them. I've worked side by side with them. And I know most of their families. I've sat down and spoke with them. I've sat down at the chief's desk and talked with him. You know, adding one officer is not gonna do anything for us. It's gonna put one, one officer on four shifts, we have four shifts. Right now that we add four officers, that puts one officer on each shift. So that, that, that helps. But it does not even, even not fix the situation completely. What I'm really concerned about is officer safety. And something happened with one of these officers. They're out there, they're trying to do their job. They're on a car stop. They're on a felony car stop. They're on a domestic call. And something happens where they don't have somebody to back them up and something happens to one of our officers. I don't want that to ever happen because we didn't take the time to say, you're worth it and put, put another officer out there for them. The, you know, we, each one of these officers in here pretty much have, at most, all of them have spent time out there on overtime. Um, you know, I look at the sergeants, I look at the lieutenants, I think, you know, these guys have been, and as well as the officers, they're putting in hours and hours and hours of overtime. Which again, takes away, as Missy said, from their families. It hurts their families and things. You know, which drives up divorces, it drives up issues in the families. Does things with their, their money situations, things like that. It, it hurts the family as a whole. And I think we need to, again, stand behind our officers. You know, we, we need four officers out there. It gives them one per shift. So that we can try to help our officers, say you're worth it. We want to make sure that we've got somebody else there to help you when you're doing your job and support them and vote for four officers tonight.
So Kip, I just want to address your comment. In no portion of my comments did I want to make sure I intended, I did not infer anything. So I'm not suggesting that the officer element of the budget is the portion that's of issue. That's simply not the case. I'm looking at the budget and saying, how do we do that and not go up four mills on the proposed budget? So it's not a, it's not a sacrifice that I'm looking to make for the community's safety or the officers' emotional and professional wellbeing. So just for the record, that was not in my comments by, on purpose, because I was not suggesting that.
Thank you.
So for the record, Mr. Mayor, are we still in the public hearing or is that closed? Where are we at in the process?
No, that was closed.
The hearing was closed.
Any other counsel have a viewpoint they want to talk about?
You got anything, Mike?
I agree with everything that everybody said. I want police safety, but I don't think that we need to bang in for police all at one time. I don't know about this four shifts. But I, I don't see why we couldn't do one or two at a time and bring them in gradually. Make it easier on our budget. That, that's my point. I, I don't know. I'm, I'm not in favor of doing the, the big mill levy increase. I think we could stay closer to our mill levy and increase maybe one or two at a time and do it a little bit slower. I'm all about police safety and maybe more managerial from our police staff, you know. I, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm mixed on it. Really, I am.
I'm torn as well. I've got my 86 year old mother. I do not want to raise her taxes on. She's on social security. But if she has a heart attack, I want nine one one. I want them to be there, you know, so. You know, what do I do? And so again, I, I guess we close it. They can't speak to us, can they?
Let me just say, I've had personal experience with the nine one one call for my in-laws four or five times this summer. And it's our local police officers that are there within three to five minutes. The ambulance was 15 minutes the last time. In a heart attack situation, that is not gonna save somebody's life, 15 minutes. And, but what happens is, our two officers that are on duty respond to the nine one one call and then there's nobody else in the rest of town. Or if they're on a domestic dispute, they can't pull off from that to go to the nine one one call. So you know, it, it's a, boy, it's a terrible situation for us to be putting our officers in one way or the other. And then I'd like to respond to a comment about, we need a new city manager. Mr. Shaw thinks outside the box, comes up with multiple avenues to respond to things. He gives us multiple options. He has given us the best budgets. I was on the council for several years before Mr. Shaw became part of it. And the budgets back then were okay, but they were really hard to understand. And so I just want to defend Mr. Shaw as one of the best city managers we probably could ever hope for. Now, that's my opinion, but the other person's opinion's different. And I just want to say, I'm backing our city manager. Thank you.
I want to say something, what Mike said a while ago. You asked about the, you said you didn't know about the shifts and so that kind of helps lead me to something to even say about that. So if you got, you got a crew that's working Monday during the day. They can't work 24 hour shifts. They get off, they work 12 hour shift. They get off that night. They come back, they do that the next day. And then they gets the people on Monday night. Then, you know, then you got a whole set, new set of people that are fresh to come out and do that. If you add one person to that, say they come out Monday morning, well, that does nothing for Monday night shift. That does nothing for Wednesday shift. That does nothing for Wednesday night shift. That adds one person to them. Yeah, that helps a little bit.
I understand.
So if we can get four officers, that gives them one on each shift to help them out. And that's just a start. I mean, down the road, we need to still.
So like, how many policemen are here tonight? Just how many policemen do we have on our, our total? 30 some?
Twelve.
No. Or 20, 25? Or how many?
I think we have 12. Is that correct? Am I asking? Does it get to 16?
I mean, you know, we've talked about this before and I'm not trying to make a big deal of it. But they have a real good representation here tonight. But you're talking about your shift work and stuff. I understand that. Then I'm not trying to short that or make it any better. But I'm just, if we could graduate it in maybe more than four all of a sudden, and I'm not, I don't. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just not following what you're saying, Kip. That's all.
The answer to your question, Mike, is we have 26 safety officers.
Can you bring your microphone closer?
Closer. We have 26 safety officers. I said 30. I'm sorry. I was a little high. And, and the issue we have, that includes all the firemen as well because they're certified law enforcement as well. Both they're working or not working, they're not working the street. You take away the admin, like you said, admin, more managerial. I wasn't quite certain what you meant by that. Because we, we have me, a lieutenant and sergeants for admin. That's all we got. And the problem is, we have to train people. We have vacations. We have sicknesses. There's coming to shifts where we're pulling firemen over off duty, of course, and we're paying overtime just to fill so I can have two people on the street. Sometimes I don't even have a sergeant on the street because we're not able to. If you take away all the firemen and you take away the admin, you'd literally have 12 patrol officers for 24 hours a day around the clock for the city. The national standard is 24. If we put this four up, we're up to 16. We're still eight less than what the national standard is. Because there's always been this misconception that we have all these safety officers in that model you do. Problem is our model's outdated. That's why we're the last one in the state of Kansas to actually run it. The fire guys are awesome. They come in, they fill in for us when they can. You know, the other day we had a, a site call. Two officers had to take somebody to Wichita. We had another site call. I went on the call with the fire lieutenant and one officer that was still left in town. That's what we're having to do. That, that doesn't take any other calls that we're doing at the same exact time. We don't have the personnel. So it's, that's what we're trying to explain. One person. It's hard to explain that one shift deserves it more than the other because they don't. They're all getting their rear ends worked off. You talked about we should have been doing this. We've been working on this for two years. They're trying to figure out how we can do this without having to go four mills. I don't want to do four mills on my house, but I don't, I don't see a choice. I, I'm hired to run this agency. And sitting as a, as an agency head or sitting as a, a person that lives here, it's tough. Because whatever we suggest affects us as well. I hate to see other departments cut because of what we're trying to do. But it's, I, I just don't see another choice on keeping the safety of the town. You know, we added medical calls the last couple of years. Because of the ambulance services, we're taking 10, 15 minutes to get an ambulance call. Now I can have officers there within a couple of minutes. They, they resupply us with all of our supplies, the county does. But our people are already on duty, so we added the service to the city. And it's working great, as you said, for your, your family. But it all comes at a cost. Chief, some of the officers are also EMTs, correct? Repairman. All my fire are, you know, almost all the fire EMTs, they even have a paramedic and some of the officers are as well. Okay.
Chief, if we gave you those four mills, is that cut down overtime for you guys?
It should cut down some overtime. Would it get rid of it? No, I don't think, no matter what you do, you'll never, ever get rid of all overtime. It's just because if you're in the middle of working a crime or you've arrested somebody, you just don't hand it off to somebody else. So here you go and walk away. That's, it's not the way it's done. We have evidentiary issues, stuff like that. Would it take it down? Hopefully considerably. I mean, when I was first hired three and a half years ago, we knew, and I met with several of you when we were still on the council when I got hired, we knew where overtime was. Consistently, every year we have shrank that number slowly. But we're still probably a hundred and some thousand dollars over in overtime. You know, you can only shrink so much. Like I said before, we're one major disaster away from major issues. I mean, we do, the county does come in, higher patrol helps us as well when we call. Because there's just times where we can't do it. We don't have the people. They do come in if they have available, they have the same problem we do. I don't know of any agency that's fully staffed anywhere in the state of Kansas. You know, the other day, we were staffed fully for one day. Next day, one of my officers resigns. We're back to trying to hire somebody else just to fill that one. And I know I have two officers sitting right now that are in the hiring process at two other agencies. So we're facing that too. It's not easy, not by far. It's not just because I want more people. And the comment about the vehicles to make the officers feel well, we are just a part of that entire project. Every department in the city is part of that project, actually. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
And to be clear, Chief, when I, when I said that, it was only brought to the council the second to last meeting. It wasn't something I was aware of from first budget meeting. We're gonna go four mills. So we should have, I guess what I'm getting at is we should have been cutting other things. I think what we're hearing here, we can't, we can't lose police officers. We need to add four. We don't want to raise taxes. So we gotta go somewhere else and find this money. And I think that's what was, you know, I said multiple times throughout the meeting, we.
I'd agree. I should have seen Mr. Shaw's face when I told him what I wanted to do. It's, it's, it's not been easy, but we're trying to find, we tried grants. Problem is in grants, there's no 100% grant anymore except on the fire. there's no a hundred percent grant anymore, except on the fire side. Then at the end of five years, you have to sustain them, whether you like them or not, or the feds will fine you. Wichita's got the problem right now. Police, the same thing. They prorate it. We'll give you ninety percent this year, seventy percent the next year. You're going to absorb them in three years, whether you like it or not, and you can't get, you can't cut service, you can't lay them off. It's against the law to do that, once you take a grant for it. If you get it. And if you don't budget for it, you don't get the grant, and then you still don't get people.
Right. And, and just cutting, say, a three-hundred-thousand-dollar street sweeper this year doesn't pay those four officers next year. So, if you don't come up with the money, I guess that's, that's where I, you know, I just said in one of the meetings, well, don't, don't get a street sweeper. There's your four officers. Well, that's for this year. What, who pays it next? Where does it come next year? And I don't know what you cut every year. So that's the, that's the hard part I struggle with. I just kept saying, well, we just, let's not get this, or maybe we won't get that, you know, and I'd write those notes down and come back, like, well, that's all well, Jeff, but what about next year for the four officers? Who, where's that money coming from? And we need to figure it out, but.
I do not want to be wrong. Rages-wise, we've talked about that ever since I've been here as well, not just my department, all departments. You guys have done phenomenal for us, for consistent every year, and we appreciate that. There are more departments make more than we do? Absolutely. But they're not Augusta. They're living toward, closer to Wichita, stuff like that. But we do appreciate the raises you guys have given us over the years. We truly do. Anything else for anybody? Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
So, do we, uh, need to postpone this vote and go over this list again? Because Mr. Mars missed, missed that day. I missed that day, because that's when my son was getting married. I don't know who else missed it.
Don't think we really have the time, unless we're going to have a special meeting next Monday night.
Yes, so, you want me to weigh in?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I didn't know if your conversation was done. So, we, we've never actually had that before. You've always, every other year I've been here, you voted night of, so I was just verifying with Erica. Since that deadline is out past your next council meeting, I don't think that there are any issues if you wanted to take additional time. My understanding is, you've conducted your hearing, so you don't have to have another hearing or publications on it. So I think if you, if you wanted to take that time, you could schedule this vote at our meeting, which would be on, let's see, is that the fifteenth? And then if you wanted to have an additional session to try to discuss options, then you have this intervening week to fit that in, if that's something you'd like to do.
I'd like to do it. And you make a motion, Jeff?
Can you all be here the eighths?
Yes.
I mean, you got to swear in blood that you're going to be here.
I, I'm going to swear in blood that I will not be here on the eighth. I'm already traveling that day, so it would have to be later in the week for me to be here. So, mid-week later, or I can still do it even later this week.
I can make any night work.
I'll make myself available no matter what.
No, just give me a date.
Friday.
Sure.
Let's not do Friday.
How about Wednesday the tenth?
Wednesday the tenth.
I can't be here on Wednesdays, okay?
Thursday the eleventh?
Thursday the eleventh, yeah.
Or what about Saturday? They're doing budgets on Saturdays.
It's fun.
And that's if the whole council wants it. I don't want to speak for everybody. I'd like to.
We got to solve this. We got to get this solved.
Thursday the eleventh. Thursday the eleventh.
I'd prefer it on a Saturday, because we're going to, it's going to be a long meeting.
Yeah.
Because we've went, we spent hours trying to find places to cut. And if you guys have the list, the cut list amounted to nothing.
Right. I, that's the problem, is the cut list, there's nothing on there.
So we're going to have to find something.
Saturday the thirteenth, the thirteenth. I'm wide open that Saturday.
Okay. Somebody make a motion.
Well, I was going to say that the thirteenth, I, I just feel like would be problematic, because our packets for that meeting will go out on the fifteenth, so we have no ability to share or, or to incorporate. I mean, I guess technically we don't need that, but we, we will be sending out packets that are incomplete, that don't have any updated information. That's the only challenge there.
You can't. Can you, anybody do Saturday the sixth?
Here?
Yes.
I'm, I'm okay. That's just Saturday.
I won't.
I won't.
Well, I'll have to change something, but I can, I can make it happen.
Jake can't be here on Saturday.
Well, Jake, when can you be here?
The third, the fourth, the fifth, the tenth, the eleventh, the twelfth, the thirteenth.
I, I mean, council, here's the thing, is if you're comfortable with that, we, we would just be putting out a notice very similar to what we have right now. It would, it would just be a vote on the budget, so, I mean, nothing's technically changed. We just want to be able to provide any updated information in the packet for the public if anything comes out of that work session, because you'll still be deciding it into the weekend, so. I mean, you're not going to be voting on anything before then. You're just having a discussion, so maybe it's not a big deal. If that, if that's a date that gets you all here, then, then, then it's better than not having you here. So. Okay, so, what, what date did you say? In October? It was the first or the second?
It's October, it's October first.
All right, so Erica had this idea, so you can see that we do have five Mondays this month, and so everything that we're struggling with right now was based on trying to hit your only other scheduled council meeting on the fifteenth. If you wanted to schedule a special meeting, say, on the, the twenty-second, or something like that, to actually do the vote, that would buy you another week or, or so to try to find time that overlaps to get all of you here, if you wanted to consider doing that. If you're trying to hit the fifteenth, that's what we're struggling to find a date with.
You'd still have to have the two meetings, the work session, to have the conversation, and then the special meeting on the tw- twenty-second.
Yes, it just, if you scheduled a special meeting to do the vote on the budget on the twenty-second, or the, does twenty-ninth give you enough time to send off anything? It's, that's tight.
That's really tight.
So twenty-second is as late as we would want to go, but that gives you the next two full weeks, if you want to try to find a date in there.
Saturday the thirteenth, work for everybody?
Saturday the thirteenth.
Sean, the twentieth?
I'm open. I don't care.
I, I can make them all. I'll let you guys decide. I'll make anything. I can.
You said you couldn't do Monday.
Which Monday?
Any other Monday.
Somebody make a motion for Saturday the thirteenth.
Is Sean the only one that can't make Saturday the thirteenth? I mean, you have seven of us. Thursday the eleventh. Those two seem like it, the majority.
Thursday.
Thursday. Everybody here Thursday the eleventh?
Yeah.
I make a motion, we have a special meeting September eleventh, six P.M.?
Second. Got a motion and a second to have a special meeting September eleventh to review possible cuts in the budget? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Now, do we need a motion for this twenty-second?
If you did it on the eleventh, then there would be time to get it on the agenda for the fifteenth.
Okay.
Yeah, so on the fifteenth, we could have you do your vote to schedule the special meeting at that time?
Josh?
If you'd like.
Or it could be on the agenda for a vote on the fifteenth, if they do it on the eleventh.
That's possible.
Because the packet wouldn't go out until the twelfth.
So right now, we're saying you don't have to decide. Because you, you'll, if, if you have your session.
If we have the session.
Basically, basically what I'll do, to leave all options open, I could have the budget agenda item on the agenda for the fifteenth, and if you're ready to proceed with it, coming out of that work session, then we'll proceed with it, and, and if not, then we'll have it on, we'll schedule the special meeting later, and we'll have it on that agenda. So you just keep all your options open. You don't have to vote on it tonight. You can decide after you have your work session on the eleventh.
Did someone make a motion for that?
I believe there was a motion and a second.
There was a motion and a second.
Who?
Six P.M.
Who was the motion?
I believe Jeff Brown was motion, Mike Martin was a second.
And the vote was seven to one. Okay.
So may, maybe, maybe to Andrew or to Erica, just a matter of procedure, we do have the, the consider approval of the twenty-twenty-six budget. Would they need to table that tonight, or are they able to move on without tabling, or would you recommend that they table it? Take a vote to table it? And the recommendation is to take a vote to table approval of the twenty-twenty-six budget.
I make a motion to table the budget, the twenty-twenty-six budget?
Second. Got a motion and a second to table the twenty-twenty-six budget vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. And just for a note, it, it said twenty-twenty-five budget on the sched- schedule here.
On the agenda.
Agenda. How about ordinance, uh, number twenty-two forty-nine on the maximum?
So you'll need to make a motion to table that as well, because it's related to the budget adoption.
Okay. Can I get a motion for tabling item number three?
I make a motion to table item number three.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to table item number three. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Thank you all. If, we're going to go down now and spend some, some money. Sourcewell proposal for salt storage building, item number four, staff.
Yes, uh, Mayor. Want to give everybody a chance to exit, just for noise?
Thank you to all the officers and your families that showed up tonight, and everybody else that came to, to the meeting. Appreciate you.
Thank you, guys.
Amen.
Must be a ten or twelve of them right here.
We're off the bank.
Okay, uh, Mayor and Council, this, uh, this item for the salt sand storage building, this is a continuation of, uh, prior staff reports, prior discussions on the Public Works Complex project. And, uh, if you recall from our prior meetings, um, we, uh, we already have our, our engineer essentially, um, under contract to do the site civil work related to the salt sand storage building. And just for anyone at home that, that isn't familiar with what we're doing, this is related to the Public Works Complex project that was bullet pointed on that list. The salt sand storage building, which is where we keep our materials, it's a response to, uh, uh, emergency weather conditions. That building is physically falling down. And, um, the materials that are within the building are essentially what's holding the building up, and so we're not able to access and use them, which is why the salt sand storage building was pulled out of the broader scope of the Public Works Complex and is going as a standalone, so we can try to get that built, uh, this year and have it ready going into this winter storm season. So at the prior meetings, uh, you had authorized the engineering to be done, and, um, what we're bringing to you tonight is a source well contract to acquire the, the building. And I believe there is a price associated with the source well contract as well for installation, if I'm not incorrect on that. So they have quoted price for installation. You will still have some other site civil work. You will still probably have some preparation of the retaining walls, the structures that this will sit on. But the, uh, these types of buildings are probably the most common building that is going up for salt sand storage, because they're the most cost-effective. The, the, kind of the dome shape that you will see with a lot of these buildings, I believe, is uh, probably the, uh, the best shape for getting you volume in terms of storage capacity and getting you clearance for your, for your taller equipment that is typically used to move the salt and sand around. If you go back over the last ten years, one of the things that we started doing a long time ago was to piggyback onto state and to federal contracts. Those state and federal contracts have already been bid competitively, either at the state or federal level. And so it's a way of cutting out extensive lengths of time for you to do your own selection process, because you're able to essentially piggyback on that contract that has already been executed, the prices that have already been determined. And so you're essentially able to just, uh, pick these items out of a catalog that satisfy all of those bidding conditions. Uh, we have been using Sourcewell for the better part of ten years. We used, uh, Sourcewell to construct the solid waste facility that is at the electric complex. We used it for heavy equipment, for playgrounds, uh, so we felt very comfortable with, uh, using that. And it's the, uh, the quickest way for us to get this building up, um, in time for use this winter season. So the Sourcewell quote was a hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars. And then the wild card is, if there are any tariffs that are associated with this facility, which at any given point in time, we don't know until that's ready to ship and, and be delivered. So, uh, what we're asking is for authorization of the, uh, Sourcewell proposal for the maximum cost of the hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-five, plus any tariffs that may be applied that we have to pay if there's any shipment related, um, that triggers tariffs. So, uh, for anyone that is looked across or actually driven down and seeing the Compo's mulch yard to explain what we're doing, the city owns all but one of the properties that are on the east side of Grove Street right now. This is where our current street shop is located, and this is the future location of our Public Works Complex, which involves several buildings. Uh, we just completed the, uh, the water storage building up here. We just completed the clearance of the, uh, the trees and, uh, building this side out, which is going to be the future location of the Compo's mulch yard, which will be moving across the way to this location. And then the salt sand storage building that we're talking about tonight will be located where the current mulch yard is. So if anybody's been tracking that activity down there, it's related to this item, uh, that's under consideration tonight. They're moving quickly to build the new Compo's mulch yard, so they can get this site cleared and ready for this storage building to go in. Uh, with that, I'll turn it over to council for consideration. Our recommendation is to move forward with approval of the Sourcewell contract.
Counsel.
I make a motion to approve the Sourcewell proposal from Greystone Construction for the installation of the Brightspan Salt Storage Building in the Public Works Campus at a maximum cost of a hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-five, plus any tariffs that may be applied during shipment.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions?
Yes, was that one hundred and fifty-five thousand bid? Was that a bid, or who come up with that?
It is part of the Sourcewell contract. Sourcewell is one of those national contracts that you can piggyback on. So they have, um, they essentially have like a board that oversees their national contracts. They put together the specs. They put together the conditions, and they solicit the proposals from across the country, from all the different firms that want to bid on that particular project. It could be equipment. It could be, in this case, buildings and installation, and so firms. And so firms submit, they're reviewed, and then if they're awarded, they get a Sourcewell contract number. And then you are able to essentially select that. And it's been competitively bid at the national level.
My question is, if it comes in at a hundred and twenty thousand or something, are we able to accept that?
This is a this is the price that you pay.
That's the final bid that we're going to expand.
That's the price that you pay if you do the Sourcewell contract.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item five, authorize project programming request for two thousand twenty seven surface preservation program, the C clip. And staff?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is one of those examples of of what staff does to try to leverage the money that you have available for a street preservation and maintenance. The C clip program is a grant funding program that exists through the Department of Transportation for the portions of any state highway that exist within your legal city boundaries. You are able to submit competitive grant applications to get funding. We ended up submitting a grant application to do maintenance and upkeep on Seventh Street. And I believe this is for the two thousand twenty seven round, so we're still a year out. But we we submitted an application partnering with our city engineer and we were successful in that application. And so the total project cost is one point three three million dollars and it's an eighty twenty percent split, meaning that the the city's local match is three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So as we move forward into the the two thousand twenty seven budgets, we're going to have to be putting together a financing package that includes the funding for this local match. But you will you will have money available. So typically what you've done in the past, you've done your temporary notes to fund street projects. And sometimes it's strictly preservation. Sometimes we've done C clip and preservation. In this case, you'll be doing more than likely C clip and probably a sidewalk package, maybe streets. There's a lot of different ways to combine that together. But the the point of this action item tonight is, do you want to accept and fully authorize that funding that we received to do what is a mill and overlay on Seventh Street between state and the West City Limits? And then you will have new pavement markings that stretch all the way from the overpass to the West City Limits. So this is basically taking care of the asphalt section that exists out there on the highway. So you previously, we had talked about it in our sessions about going after the grant. We secured it. And so now I just need to submit this paperwork. And because it's going out into a future budget year, I wanted you all to see it and authorize me rather than me moving forward with it on my own. I wanted you to see it. So that's why it's coming to you tonight.
So will you say again, it's from the West City Limits to State Street?
Essentially, essentially State Street. Yeah.
So this says West City Limits to Dearborn. That'd be halfway underneath of the overpass.
Dearborn and West.
Don't help me explain that. Did I explain it wrong, Anthony?
Well, that's the pavement marking.
So the the mill and overlay portion will actually go from about Walnut Street to the west to the city limits. That's a mill and overlay. There'll be some concrete patching, some curb and gutter work. We have to come up with that right now. It's just a very broad estimate on some percentages of what we normally see. The pavement striping will extend. They do call it Dearborn because Dearborn is underneath the overpass. But it's from the overpass. The joint on the overpass to the West City Limits. That's what we're going to be focused on, all the pavement marking. The pavement marking that we can do is just paint. It lasts about a year. When we have a contractor in here, what they'll do is it's called a multi-component. It's an epoxy resin and a hardener. And they'll actually come in and grind the concrete and kind of in inlay that down in there a little bit. It'll last quite a bit longer. So since we're going to have a project going on for that C clip, we tried to extend that painting project to handle that concrete. That concrete's in really good condition, the concrete section. And we don't foresee having to do much to that one in the near future. But to have it be consistent with the paint, we thought was desirable.
One of the things I'll I'll share real quick, because I know I've talked to citizens asking about their own streets, that we have applied millings to some streets in town as a new surfacing material. So you have you have your gravel streets, you have some asphalt, you have concrete. And then in some places, we've done millings where we've introduced the millings has been mainly to knock down dust. And so we have one residential neighborhood we did it in. We did it on the the City Lake Road. We are running low on that inventory because we we had a big project with the Ohio Street Project where we were able to get a lot of material off of, but we're we're running out of that material. And so we're not able to do a ton more maintenance or reapplication until we can get some more. So in this case, you see that it's a mill and overlay project. So our hope is off of that mill and overlay on the highway that we're able to get some material that allows us to do some of that other work. I don't know how much you expect or if there's any hiccups with the the KDOT situation about keeping any of that material, but that's our hope, I think, to get some inventory out of it.
Yes, and in the past, almost all of our mill and overlay projects, including the clink, we just write it into the spec that we want the millings and then they just truck it down to us. In the past, we've actually had them truck it out to the lake so that we could just have them dump it on the lake and we could spread it. But we'll probably have them take this down to the shop so we can put it out where it needs to go.
Any other questions? Did that answer your question? Yes, thank you.
I make a motion, authorize Mayor Rawlings to sign the project programming requests for the two thousand twenty seven C clip S P surface preservation program entitled Mill and Overlay and Pavement Patching on U S fifty four from West City Limits to Dearborn Street.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Anthony.
Good job.
Okay. AWAS relocation, land acquisition and grant execution, item number six, staff.
Yes, Mayor and Council, if you remember earlier this year, we we received another notice from the F A. Surprise, and in some ways it gets surprised, but it also put us on a timeline that we were actually awarded some additional grant funding for our automated weather observation system out at the airport. Currently, the automated weather observation sits on the west side of the property. And if you look at our long term airport layout plan within AWAS, you essentially draw a big circle around it that is supposed to be a clear zone. You're not supposed to have obstacles or things in the way interfering with that that system and its signals. Well, where the AWAS currently sits, that just happens to be in all of the development area where you could build new hangars. So we need to move it and get it to a different location. And our layout plan showed it being on the east side of the airport property. But we didn't actually have sufficient space on the airport property itself to locate it. And so we began a process in order to take advantage of that grant. We began a process of land acquisition that is also going to be covered by this grant to acquire land from the adjoining property owners, some in fee simple, some in easement, that allows us to move that tower to the east side. We worked with our airport consultant, Olson, who had a right of way specialist firm that was working as one of their subcontractors that handled negotiations for us with the adjoining property owners. And they did reach settlement numbers with those property owners, of which there are three. And so we have for you tonight, the actual grant itself, and this is for us to get reimbursed for the acquisition, correct? And is that ninety ten or was it ninety five five? Okay, it's a ninety five five split, meaning that the city's local portion is five percent, ninety five percent being covered by the the F A. So that's the first action item is authorizing us to to actually sign that grant so that we can secure our funding. And then the second action item is to essentially accept and authorize the purchase agreements that have been negotiated with the adjoining property owners that that grant is paying for. So those are your your actions tonight. And then once that is settled, then we're we're setting good on that project. I believe that that we've met our deadlines on it for the most part. It's it's been it's been a challenge, but we're at some point in the near future, we will move from this phase into a construction phase whenever the the grant programming and stuff lines up for us to be able to move that hopefully next year. If not, then the year after. But we did everything we could to try to get the acquisition done so that we'd have a chance to do the construction in the coming year. So those are the action items tonight, the grant agreement to get the funding and then authorizing the purchase agreements that the grant agreement is paying for. So with that, I'll turn it over to council for consideration.
I move to authorize the city manager to sign and execute the grant offer for infrastructure investments and job act of airport infrastructure grant at Augusta Municipal Airport in the amount of two hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, land acquisition purchase agreement.
And we're comfortable with you doing this in one motion if you just want to do all of the prices as listed on here. You don't have to do three separate motions.
Josh, how many acres was it total? Be purchased, do you know?
Is it? I don't remember offhand. I want to say somewhere in maybe like the thirty to forty ish range, something, something in that range.
Thirty acres.
In that range. I can get you the numbers later. I don't know them tonight.
The whole kit and caboodle there, you want red, right? Not just the top part?
All of them. So, yeah, I'm just saying you don't have to do a motion for every single one. You could do a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the purchase agreements for track nine and ten for the one forty six, track eleven for the eleven four. Read it that way if that shortens it for you.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute land acquisitions to purchase agreements for track nine for a hundred and forty six thousand, seven hundred and seventy, track eleven in the amount of eleven thousand, four hundred and seventy. Track, and then track eleven for the amount of a hundred dollars.
It's a leasehold interest, so it's different. It's a leasehold interest. It's a tenant that's on that.
It's nine and ten. You only said nine. Oh, I I stand corrected, nine and ten for one forty six, seven seventy.
So here, second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moves this down to what some couple of gentlemen have set through agony to get to this. Item number seven, resolution of support for Redbud Bridge Housing Investor Tax Credit. Staff?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this actually came up during the the budget discussion earlier, but just talking about, you know, how much we've struggled to to get new developments and housing in our community. And and we're fortunate tonight in in this agenda item to start building out our partnership for another potential new development in our community. If you remember back, we've had a couple of agenda items leading up to this. One of them was updating our housing study. That's a requirement that if we're going to have any discussions with developers that have any of the types of incentive packages in order to get the development to to occur, we had to update the housing study. And so this particular tax credit program is one of the ways for the developer to try to essentially get gap financing or assistance to try to help the project become more feasible. And so we do have we do have a development that's being proposed at David and Ohio Street, essentially on that corner. And this is an opportunity for them to at least get in that queue and be considered for the tax credit program, which requires a resolution from the governing body in the community in which they're applying. And then assuming that all goes well with that and there are further planning efforts, then eventually that leads to us having our future conversations on the on any development agreements to try to get that that project completed. So we do have the representatives from from that project here tonight. I know we haven't discussed it in great detail. Again, there would be more coming at a later date. There'll be agenda items in front of planning commission. But this resolution of support essentially shows our interest in supporting them and supporting the project and and trying to get the the state and the other entities involved in in supporting the project with their tax credits to help make it more feasible. So with that, I'll turn it over to council if you have any questions.
Mr. Mayor, making motion to approve resolution number two thousand twenty five dash nineteen, authorizing the preparation submission of an application to Kansas Housing Resources Corporation for the Housing Investor Tax Credit Program in support of Ten Oak Investments LLC's proposed housing development.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for investing in our community, you know?
Absolutely.
Very much. Okay, that takes us to matters from and for our city council. Mr. Martin, have you got anything?
The overpass has always been extra patch put on it, as you know. Did the Mulvane Waterline get fixed?
It is.
That's all I had.
And regarding the the patching, hopefully everybody saw. I think we sent out an update to you all. We did reach out to KDOT to to talk about the bridge. And I I think we may still be waiting for a follow up answer for them to to see if there's anything else out there. But the immediate response we got was they're not aware of anything in the queue. And at least at the moment, it wasn't a top priority project. And so I've tried to explain in the past that especially when you're dealing at the state level, that their funding and the the work that they do is really programmatic. And so you have to get into those programs. And some of those, they are planning out their projects that could go one, three, five years into the future. And a lot of the local stuff that we deal with is more kind of put out fires and responsive do a patch. When you're when you're trying to work with the state, they they don't really operate that way. Theirs is more programmatic. And so we'll keep pushing on it to try to to generate interest and and explain why we think it's important to see if we can get it into any programs. But at least right now, they indicated that it wasn't on there. So we'll just have to try to keep up with patching as best we can.
That's all I have. That's all I have.
Mr. Burke?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bailey?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Scott?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Richards? As a matter of fact, I do. Week and a half ago, I spent a little time down at our local swimming pool and just kind of observed the operations and things of the pool. And I see our pool manager's here tonight, so I'm surprised at her. But one of the things that concerns me, or a couple of things concern me there really much, the vacuum that they have at the pool is sorry to even say the best. It's it's horrible. The they can only vacuum out the deep end of the pool with the vacuum that's there. And the whole time I was there, Jake's daughter was working, trying to trying to vacuum it. And it took over the hour that I was there to try to get the pump to even prime and things. So the the where the filters at on the on the pump, it won't open up and things. So they can't fill it up with water. They've got to try to suck water out of the pool to get into it, use a garden hose and things. And it was horrible. It was horrible. I would not want to use that and stuff there. So I think next year, you know, as we're going forward, I'd like to see us take a look at some of those things with the pool and see what's going on with the vacuum system. There's some we can come up with a better way to try to fix your vacuum system and stuff there because it was it was horrible and we expect them to clean it up with with junk. And then the second thing is was I was looking at the the walls inside the pool house. And then the second thing is, was I was looking at the, the walls inside the pool house. They, um, one of the doorways where you go from out in the pool into where the office area is and things, the, the doorway, you can shake it, you can move it like this. It's a metal door frame. So obviously it's gonna, it's gonna rust and, and things like that, but it needs some good attention and things. The walls at the top, they've got a separation in them from half inch up to almost an inch on some of those and the walls are moving and things in there because they've, I saw a place where they'd been marking and things. So the walls have been moving in and things in there. So it's, it's becoming, I'm, I'm afraid it's becoming dangerous. I don't know that. I think at some point, we need to have an engineer take a look at it and see.
I believe we have, um, because we started talking about it a while ago with the potential pool house replacement. And one of the questions was how does the roof function compared to those interior walls because those gaps have been there for a while? And I believe we had a structural engineer look at it then. Um, and I, I don't think it was considered like a structural issue at that time. I'll go back and try to find that report and, and see if we can provide it to you again. Uh, I'm just going off of memory on that, but I, I'll see what we can find.
Okay, appreciate it. Like I said, so if we could have at some point, just have some conversation about the pool and things and maybe include, uh, approval manager and things in on that, just so that we could kind of take a look at and make sure that we're giving them some, um, you know, some good, a good, uh, pool up there to be able to use and things like that. I think the, the chairs need to be replaced and things up there. I know that's a little cosmetic type stuff and things, but it's, uh, they're kind of, kind of getting old and things. So I think it needs a little TLC to help you out and stuff with your, with your staff and things. But, um, on the other half of that, part of that, thank your staff for, please for us for doing a great job this year and things and stuff. So, yeah, we always appreciate them. Thank you. And you very much.
I had several people comment that they were really appreciative that we extended the Saturdays through Labor Day, even though the weather kind of turned cool. They were excited that that happened, so that was nice. Thank you.
And, and did, did, did we ever get the part in for the, I know it's getting where we can't open it now, but did we ever get the part in for the?
The splash, are we still waiting for that part on the splash pad? Tim, do you know?
Yeah, cause, yeah, cause I, I haven't heard anything in the last 12 days either, so it's getting to that time of year where it's not gonna matter because the temperatures are changing on us, but no, I, I, I am not aware that we have received the part yet.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. That's all I got.
Mr. Davis?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Brown?
Uh, I wanna say one thing. Mayor hit on, uh, Josh, I think you did a great job. You shouldn't have to listen to that.
Absolutely.
Where, where we deal with you all the time and I don't agree with that whatsoever, even though I'm making comments tonight about the budget and all that thing. I mean, you did a great job with it and it's a struggle. I think we all struggled. I don't know what we're gonna get Thursday at the 11th, but I think we owe it to everybody to look into it for the police department as well as the city, but Josh, you did a great job.
Mr. Moore? It's all your time.
Parting thoughts. Um, so yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, anytime we're talking about people's finances and people's money, it, it's an emotional conversation and I think that we need to be mindful as a council and a governing body of that. So the comments that I shared about being grateful for the ones that showed up tonight, genuinely thankful. And I'm thankful for the ones that reached out ahead of time and spoke to the different council members or the mayor and shared those comments. I'm also thankful for our police force and our city staff. We are very, very fortunate to have the people here that we do have and I recognize it's emotional when we have citizens standing up here, sharing their personal testimonies about struggling to survive financially and how a raise in a mill levy or a raise in utility rates impacts them. And I think we have a responsibility, I know we have a responsibility, to hear that and not be flippant about it. And I heard some comments up here, uh, that were bothersome. And so I, I share that as a fellow council person and I also share that as a challenge for us to be mindful of. It's really easy to just get caught up in the numbers and say, well, the city needs it, we gotta do it. That is not wrong. And at the same time, the city are the people standing up here saying, I can't afford this. We have a responsibility to go back and look at what we can do. And it may be a, it may be a haves list that looks smaller than what it looked like going into this revenue neutral situation conversation. It may not. We'll see what it brings, but we owe it to the city and we owe it to the citizens to have that conversation.
Mayor, I'll make motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Josh, your mic just kept cutting in and out tonight.
I can't.
Test it.